Start the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our state to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. I salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
I'm present.
Ten.
Ten, yeah. Ten present.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and darken chamber for my dear friend Judge S. Zaharulas, a resident of Lowell and Chelmsford. Judge attended Chelmsford Public Schools, class of 57. He was married to the late Joanne Zaharulas for 52 years. Judge worked for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for over 45 years. He started at the state auditor's office and later transitioned to Lowell Tech as director of Accounts Payable, which became University of Lowell and subsequently UMass Lowell. Judge also served for six years in the United States Army, National Guard, and was honorably discharged. Judge was involved in many national and local organizations. He served in the Holy Trinity Church Parish Council and was council president for several years. Judge was a member of the HEPA Chapter 102 of Lowell, the Pan Laconian Society, the Eastern Club, and the Greek-American Veterans. Judge was involved in other organizations that preserved the history of Greece and the history of Greek-Americans settling in the area. He was involved with local government and served 35 years on the Lowell Planning Board, where he served as chairman for several years. He served in the Lowell Historic Board and as the Lowell representative on NIMCOG Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. Judge volunteered his time coaching baseball at Calory Park and basketball for summer and church leagues. Most of the players remember the Sunday afternoon practices held at the Bartlett School. Judge was also a coach at the Casey Jones Basketball School. Judge loved to fish and was a lifelong member of the Lowell Sportsman's Club. In his younger years, Judge enjoyed playing and coaching soccer. Judge, along with his pal John McDonald, they had a radio show on WCAP called J Mac and the Bear. Judge was the bear. Judge is survived by three sons, S. Judge, Anthony, and Michael. Three grandsons, Christopher, Nicholas, and Aristotle Zaharulas. Judge was predeceased by his wife and his son Stephen Zaharulas. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, his many friends, along with his veteran colleagues. He will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and darken chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Costler. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have a moment of silence and darken the chamber to remember 2 millions Cambodian, including my entire family, who died under the Camero regime after the fall of Cambodia on April 17, 1975, which is 49 years ago tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, please darken the chamber. May they all rest in peace. Mayor's business, 2.1 Communication to Go Remote, Jupzis patient. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Getchea. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1. Minutes of the Housing Subcommittee, April 9th. City Council Regular Meeting, April 9th. Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, April 10th. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Leahy. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, could I suspend the rules after this?
Okay. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask permission to suspend the rules to allow Peg Paris to speak on the Cherish Act, please.
Motion by Counselor Mercier.
Second.
Speaker, seconded by Counselor Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Margaret Paris, known also as Peg, to my good friend Rita and Rodney, who 20 years ago, we were very instrumental in moving the senior center from Smith Baker to its present location. And so I'm back. And I loved working with them so much that I actually moved to Lowell a couple of years ago, and ever since then have been on the phone talking to the mayor. So.
Name and address.
Margaret Paris, 525 Pawtucket Boulevard in Lowell. And actually, I'm here tonight to ask for the council's support for the Cherish Act. And the Cherish Act basically is the lifeline for public higher education in Massachusetts. And I really wasn't all that aware of it until my good friend Carolyn Scafidi, who is actually now the Mass Teachers Association Senate District Coordinator for this area and is working with Senator Kennedy's office on the Cherish Act. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Carolyn, and I thank Rodney for being here. Rodney is a big supporter of this act and has been really, 40, did you say? Forty state legislators have pushed it through so far. So with the two colleges in, actually, my older son graduated from UMass Lowell and my granddaughter graduated from Bridgewater State. So we're very involved in the public state school system. And so, turn it over to Carolyn. You might recognize Carolyn. She's a teacher and has been around this area for a while, so.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Scafidi. I resided 13 Lynn Avenue, Tingsborough, Massachusetts, even though I spent a lot of time in Lowell with the Lowell Education Justice Alliance. I'm a retired teacher and I work part-time for my union, the Mass Teachers Association, as a Senate District Coordinator. And in my role, I help bring together educators, community members, and their legislators to advocate for public education in our communities. I specifically work with Senator Kennedy and Representative Rodney Elliott, Vanna Howard, and Roddy Mom in the 1st Middlesex District to discuss the legislation that's vital to public education from preschool through higher ed. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to ask you to pass the Higher Ed for All Resolution. But before I continue, I want to thank Senator Kennedy, Representative Elliott, Vanna Howard, and Roddy Mom for co-sponsoring the Cherish Act, which is an integral part of the Higher Ed for All legislation. Also, I hope that all of you have received a packet of information of the Higher Ed for All and the Cherish Act, and the information should embellish what I'm going to present tonight. To start with, the Higher Ed for All is a vision for high-quality, debt-free, public higher education. It includes four pillars. First, recruit and retain high-quality faculty and staff. Two, debt-free public higher education. Three, increase student support. And four, green, healthy, and safe buildings. We can win Higher Ed for All through the passage of the Cherish Act and through additional investment in public higher education within the state budget, including through the usage of the Fair Share Amendment funds. We can fund this vision through the use of Fair Share Amendment funds, which is earmarked for funding transportation and public education pre-K to higher education. Lowell is proud to be the home of two public higher education institutions, UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College. We want those students to remain in Lowell. It's important to note that the cost to Lowell for supporting this resolution is absolutely nothing because higher education is funded by the state. It will actually help bring Lowell new money from the state. When the state invests in UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College, they're investing in the future of Lowell and its residents. Supporting this resolution shows that the Lowell community agrees with the vision for high-quality, debt-free, public higher education. More students will stay in Lowell after they graduate. They'll pay taxes, own homes, start businesses, and start families. The city of Lowell is a great place to live, and we want to ensure that our residents can access our public higher education campuses, graduate debt-free, and continue to stay and live in Lowell for years to come. State investment in these Lowell institutions, including improved infrastructure, increased better compensated staffing, and more supported students, also makes the city of Lowell a better place to live. By signing onto this resolution, you are showing the legislature that they need to prioritize public higher education funding and legislation. Thank you, and I hope you vote in favor of supporting this Higher Ed for All Resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the council supports a resolution that the city clerk and the solicitor draw up the resolution for us to support that. And I'd like to ask for a roll call as well.
Motion by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Robinson, Counselor Getchea.
Before I support anything, I would like to read more about, I didn't have this in my packet, so I'm not even prepared to even support or not support something.
It won't be till next week. So it'll come for a result to be written up. It'll be posted on the agenda for next week's meeting, and then we'll take an official vote to support then.
Because I mean, I have questions on if we're taking the funding out of, there's only so much in that funding out of education and transportation, what effect will that have also in the lower grades that have to prepare students to get to the higher education? So there are questions on where the funding would come from and what effect will that have on educating at the lower ends during the school budget? So if that would be also presented.
Sure, yeah. Just want to come back next week maybe for a couple of questions.
Yeah. I don't think it would really take money away from pre-K to lower because it's for all education, pre-K through 12.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay.
I don't have enough information in front of me to make an educated.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the motion is just to write it up for next week for a discussion and a vote that makes sense. Counselor Mercier, is that correct?
Well, if we could have the support to send it to the city clerk as well as the city solicitor to draw up the proper vote.
Sure.
Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Robinson. Do our roll call. Counselor Mercier.
It's a roll call for this motion. Yes.
Motion to refer the Law Department.
Right.
To refer.
Right, to refer it to the Law Department. We'll take it back next week.
The official motion to support will be next week, not tonight.
Right, so yes, on the motion.
Yes. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchea.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next week. Counselor Getchea.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules. While we're under suspension of rules, take motion 4.3 out of order if that's.
Motion by Counselor Getchea, take 4.3 out of order, seconded by Counselor Dakota. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.3 by Counselors Getchea and Dakota, request city manager add full-length sidewalks to Campbell Drive, St. Paul Street, and Fleming Street for the safety of students, staff, and residents of the Daily and Bailey Schools. No second needed. Counselor Getchea.
As registered speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Good evening, city manager, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Thank you for all you do. I'm speaking in support of this motion. I think it's important that we have sidewalks over at the Bailey and the Daily Schools. We have 28 schools in our school district. 26 of them have sidewalks. Gertrude Bailey was a teacher that lived up on Pine Street. And the school, the Bailey School is named after her, and she was the principal over at the Pine Street School. The one thing about Gertrude Bailey is she walked back and forth to school every day. A number of years ago, about 30 years ago, the city of Lowell chose to build about 12 schools, 12 schools, the Butler School, the Weg School, the Stocklosa School, the McAven U Schools, the McCarleff, the Sullivan. It had addition to the Burry as well as the Pawtucketville Memorial. All of them were equipped with sidewalks. Moving forward, 30 years later, we, as a city, have realized that people are driving a little bit faster. And by driving faster, we've enacted, this city council has enacted, a 25 mile per hour speed limit. So we understand that safe driving is something that we all need to consider. Not only has this city council enacted that, but if I remember, recently, we recently had a conversation about speed bumps throughout the city, on Andover Street, on some streets where people are driving a little bit too rapidly, but it might cost the city too much money. You know, lastly, we have some driving with people really not just changing the radio anymore. Sometimes they're looking at their cell phones, sometimes they're not really paying attention. Students and grandparents and parents trying to walk their children to school. On both sides of Campbell Drive, Fleming Street, we have cars parked. So if you are a student walking to school, you have a detriment, many blocks in your way. You can choose to walk on grass surfaces, you can choose to walk on the street, and you know, you can sort of, I hate to say it, but sort of take the life in your own hands. Take your life into your own hands. This is a major safety issue, and this is something that we need to go ahead and address before anything happens. Students that are walking to the Bailey and the Daily School range in age from 5 to 14 years old. Sometimes, I remember when I walked, and I know some parents will send their kids off to school, and the last thing you need to hear is that something happened. So I ask that this city council go ahead and support this motion to begin to develop sidewalks over at the Bailey and the Daily Schools.
Just your address for the record, Mr. Bahu.
225 Gibson Street, Lowell, Massachusetts.
Just because you're on a school committee doesn't necessarily mean you live in Lowell, right? I know, right?
Lock the rules, sir. Thank you.
Just.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Manager. Again, my name is Bob Hunt. I live at 48 Florence Avenue in Lowell, Mass. I've come to speak in favor of this motion tonight, and it's really been a long time coming. There is not one egress from either the Daily or the Bailey School that has complete sidewalks. It is a hodgepodge neighborhood of sidewalks along the way. I pick up my granddaughter on Florence Road, cars parked on both sides. When the buses come up, there is no room at all, and the kids are trying to get out. They're walking on lawns. It's really, really an unsafe situation. And I implore you to at least look at the bus routes and at least pave both sidewalks on each side of the roads, either Florence or however the, I'm not sure how the buses from the Bailey get out, but they should be looked at first rather than paving any of the other parts of it. So I hope that you really take this into consideration and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Early. I live at 476 Pine Street. So I'm not speaking out against it. I think it's, I'm all in favor of sidewalks everywhere. But I think Westford Street is a pretty nasty little, I've walked there sometimes myself going to Hannafords, a lot of neighborhood people do when they want to go to shopping. And Westford's a little bit faster than Florence or Campbell or the other streets around the Bailey. I do agree, I think there should be sidewalks over there. But I think another location too is Chelmsford between Stevens and the Route 3 overpass. I think there's no sidewalk there. And I think 110 is a little bit crazier than the streets around, although I do agree that sometimes the parents are kind of crazy around the Daily and the Bailey Schools. So driving can get hectic there too, I agree. Because I go, I live in the neighborhood, so I do see it. But I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of other really important places that sidewalks should go in, which I think are equally or maybe more important, I would say. So thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Dillon. I live at 657 Stevens Street. And I'm speaking tonight with the support of over 100 signatures from the neighbors and mostly parents of the students. And I have their signatures here. Getting this amount of signatures in a short amount of time at drop-off and pickup last Monday only speaks to the volume of support from parents. I have lived in the Highlands my entire life. My children went to the Washington School and then to the Daily, so I never experienced dealing with the drop-off and pickup situation at the Bailey until recently. So my granddaughter started kindergarten, and I went to walk her to school. I'm not a regular, but I filled in. We walked out Hanson Terrace onto Campbell Drive. I couldn't believe my eyes. I have a photo. There were cars parked on both sides, steady traffic moving down the middle of the street towards the school. I said to my granddaughter, where are we supposed to walk? She said, in the street, nanny, but sometimes we just go through people's yards. I couldn't believe it. So I started talking to people about it, and everyone says the same thing. It's a nightmare. Meanwhile, I'm not unfamiliar with living near school traffic. We spent many years living one house up from the corner of Fleming and Campbell Drive and dealt with the Daily School traffic. I think what's changed today is that most parents choose to drive their walkers to school. This has created new congestion with cars and pedestrians in all areas. My granddaughter attending the school, so I joined the school site council and brought it up at the next meeting. Apparently, it's not a new issue. It's been brought up many times over the years, but with never any follow-through. So parents indicated the Daily is also in need of some changes. So just to review some numbers, and you all have a copy of this, so I won't say the total numbers on the next page, but there's 460 total students at the Bailey, 280 bus students, and 180 walkers. Daily School, 672 total students with 464 walkers in the morning and 409 in the afternoon. So we are proposing a serious look at the traffic flow at both schools. When I walked the streets talking to parents and neighbors the other day, I learned, and these are their concerns. Enforcement of the current no parking on one side during specific times on Campbell Drive with bigger signage to include no parking or idling. Because there's signs already down Campbell Drive, but they all just ignore them and park there. There is lots of supports for one-way traffic on the portion of Fleming Street at the request of the crossing guard. That poor man standing at Fleming Street, he gave me an earful, and the traffic's coming at him in all directions. And he said it would work so much better if it was rerouted like it is down at the Bailey. And also on St. Paul Street, the neighbors want that to be one-way because the two-way is making it very dangerous. And then additional sidewalks, some of those things can happen pretty easily. But the most important issue is the addition of sidewalks down one side of the entire length of Campbell Drive, St. Paul Street, and Fleming Street. We have minimal sidewalks installed, ending abruptly at random places, does not make any sense nor is handicap-friendly. So I have sort of what could be a before and after picture. So this is what they look like before school gets out, and I'll pass them along. You can look. You can see about a half hour before school dismisses, this is the parking start. So this doesn't show when the cars start driving and the walkers are there. And this is the two houses where there's a sidewalk. And you see how clean this looks. So this is what we would love, and this is what we have. So I'll take those. From what I understand, St. Paul Street and Campbell Drive are scheduled for paving in your very aggressive plan to improve roadways and sidewalks. City Manager Golden, you have made improving roadways and sidewalks a priority, and I thank you for that. But please do not exclude this area from your efforts. Without sidewalks, people will park anywhere they can, and it's very difficult to enforce an orderly process. I don't blame these parents parking wherever they can. They are given little option and no direction. But yet, the city placed the Bailey School in a neighborhood over 30 years ago with little infrastructure. So the parents and students suffer, and the neighbors continue to deal with the frustration. So at the March 19 meeting, there was a motion response to sidewalk assessments, and I got a copy of this map, so I'm sure you're all familiar with it because it was at your meeting. But just to refresh, I took a look at it, and over here it says anticipated pedestrian demand, and it's highlighted with color coding so that the blue and the pink are the high pedestrian areas and the yellow is the low pedestrian areas. And the number one tier for using, finding out what the areas are is school districts. So I look, and certainly downtown the city is blue and pink around it, but then I see all these pink circles on the outskirts. So I looked a little bit closer when I had the zoom on, and there were all the schools on the outskirts. So when I looked down at the Bailey and the Daily, there's no pink. It's all yellow, and that indicates low pedestrian demand. But then I said, I kind of wished we had a pink circle. But then I realized, we don't have a pink circle maybe because we don't have sidewalks. And this was to repair existing sidewalks, I'm guessing. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe that's why we don't have a pink circle because we don't have the sidewalks to be fixed. So this is our anticipated pedestrian demand, and I'm not going to read all these numbers. You have them on your papers. But the number of students that attend school in the Highlands is 4,244 total students. 1,132 of them are from the Bailey and the Daily. As residents of the Highlands, we have not only endured the addition of multiple schools in our neighborhood, but we have welcomed them. We understand the need to avoid the school areas for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. We have done so with little to no complaining to the city. It's a sacrifice we make for the education of our children. 600-plus students, not including parents, walk this area two times a day, 180 days a year, totaling 360 hours each year. I'd say that's a well-worth-it investment. So we hope you will prioritize this request to finally give us the necessary pedestrian infrastructure to ensure the safety of our walking students. Please, 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 do not waste money doing improvements in this area without the addition of badly needed sidewalks. Thank you.
Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke, and thank you to the speakers. I grew up in this area before, when there was neighborhood schooling. And when there was neighborhood schooling, there wasn't as much drop-off because, and now with busing and buses being pushed back and not picking up, you see a lot of people driving their kids because if you're going to drive to the highways to get to work, why would you not drive and drop off at those two spots on your way rather than have somebody stand out in the weather or just wait for a bus? You can have more quality time with your children. The thing that's interesting in that area is when you look from Stevens Street to Newberry, there's sidewalks on Fleming, on both sides. And then when you come down just past Newberry, it just fell off. It looks like there was a Capitol Plan issue or whatever happened, but they just stopped there. And when you look at that St. Paul area and you start looking at when it snows and you're pushing people even tighter in the areas and people are trying to walk down the road and someone picked up someone and they're trying to drive by at the same time, it makes it extremely dangerous. The snow blanks, and the other thing is, I believe that when you see a school committee member stand up here and you think, I wonder if the school committee actually would endorse something, a plan like this. I'm sure they would. More foot traffic than ever around the schools. I don't want to compare this project to any other project in the city. I don't think that's fair. I think if you look at Westford Street, you can get on either side and actually walk down Westford Street. You just may have to cross the road at a traffic light to get on the other side and actually walk down it, and the same thing with Chelmsford Street. So when you look at conditions, I would rather have a bad sidewalk than no sidewalk around a school. At least you can get down and walk on it. And I think that, as one of the speakers mentioned, the red in those maps are absolutely for existing sidewalks. We didn't look at outside of that. We were just saying, okay, what are the conditions of the existing sidewalks? Mr. Manager, you know the area as well as anybody, and you know, nothing does lead to that area for a sidewalk. And it's very dangerous. It's tight with more and more cars picking up and whether it's the COVID issue that more people drop off their students or whether the Highlands has a unique thing, is close to all the highways. So if you're from another part of the city, Pawtucketville, and your child goes to the Daily or the Bailey, you just shoot down and then jump on the highway rather than put them on a bus, and it just makes more sense. So I would ask that the manager would look into this and get back to us as soon as possible. So I would ask that the manager would look into this and get back to us as soon as possible so we can either add this to a capital plan or see what we have funding currently to at least put sidewalk down one side of Fleming Street. I don't think it's much to ask when, no one's asking for both sides at this point. And when you look at St. Paul, the roadworks there, so why not just look at adding the sidewalks while we're at that point? I don't think that would be much of a change order for that piece and whatever other roads are in the process of being done at that point. And thank you again, Mr. Manager, for listening to us.
Mr. Cotto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the speakers. Actually, Mrs. Dillon kidnapped me and we went on a tour last week of the area. And everything, I actually went back to my office and checked her figures and her numbers were right on the money. I'm glad there's a school committee member here tonight because for the last 18 years, I've been calling for neighborhood schools and what's kind of been pushed aside each time. Because if we did have neighborhood schools, more buses, we'd be able to pick up more students within a closer range of the school. But that's a story, that's a discussion for another day, I guess. About 15 years ago, local government worked a little bit differently. When I, as the transportation director, I actually went to DPW and knocked on Eddie Walsh's door and asked him if he had any extra money that he could put sidewalks in. And he said, "Yeah, I got a couple bucks." And he ended up doing those two sidewalks right on Campbell Drive. Government works a little bit differently, obviously, this time around, but I think Counselor Gitcher brought up a lot of good points here. This isn't, we're not looking for aesthetics here. We're looking, this is student safety. And nobody can ever consider District 8, the Upper Highlands, a NIMBY district. We have four schools within a quarter of a mile. And we have a lot of traffic. And I ask each and every one of you to go at 2:10 at the Daley in the afternoon, at 2:50 at the Bailey in the afternoon. And you have 15 minutes of utter chaos. The one-ways that are in place were put in place approximately 12 years ago by the traffic engineer guy. I had asked for that. That's so presently, that's what's in place, was what the traffic engineer at that time had proposed. Should we relook, take another look at that? I would say yes, we should. It's not going to get any better with the traffic. And the only reason why I say that, as the transportation director of Lowell Public Schools, we are losing school bus drivers each and every day. We have some students not even being picked up in the morning. All right? Because the service is that bad. Or the students are on the bus for an hour, and yeah, I'd rather drive my child to school rather than keep him on a bus for an hour. So I'm glad Mr. Bahu's here. He can bring the concerns to the school department by looking at neighborhood schools. But, Mr. Manager, this is something that we seriously need to take a look. I understand that this is a heavy lift. You know, this, all the sidewalks, all the way up and down, but this is, I think, a priority for District 8 and then the Upper Highlands. And I appreciate your time.
Counsel Mercy and Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very well-put-together sidewalk proposal. And everybody said mostly what I would have wanted to say. But there is an important factor here, and it not only just deals with the sidewalks, it deals with enforcement of the current no parking on one side during specific times. So there would be proper signage that would probably be needed. And then there's a lot of support for one-way traffic on a portion of Fleming Street. Those two issues right there, could we take this proposal submitted by Kathy Fallon, Dillon Fallon? I only known her for 40 years, but anyways, if we could give this to Elizabeth Altman, the transportation engineer, just to have her look at this and perhaps get the ball rolling on that portion of Fleming Street. So that's my...
Mr. Mayor, if Counsel Mercy doesn't mind, maybe as well, Mr. St. Seer, as well as the traffic engineer, as well.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want, I too want to thank all the speakers who spoke on these issues. Ms. Kathy Dillon was right. This is not a new issue. I have two kids, two of my kids went to both Bailey and Daley. Particularly Campbell Drive, both sides of the street, car come right in the middle and sometime grandparent taking off their kid. But, you know, car coming and car on both sides. And it's Counsel Dakota is correct, especially during the school out and school in. This has been an issue in this area for some time, no sidewalk. I know that Mr. Managers and his team has put a lot of emphasis on or really the focus on sidewalk improvements and all that. And we put a lot of money into it the last years, and hopefully we do the same this year and that time to look at it and do something about it. And particularly, a few months ago, maybe five months ago, I filed a motion around the parking lot and the Bailey, a poor design, really bad design, and I don't know where we at on it. Maybe a report on that too will be helpful. So this is, seemed to be an urgent ask that the manager and his team look into it. And so, thank you.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd also like to thank the speakers for coming. I do think that this is part of a larger issue, as Counsel Dakota mentioned. Obviously, the sidewalks are needed around the school. I think it's one of the only schools looking at the map that doesn't have any sidewalks around it. Possibly because this was such a largely, you know, neighborhood-driven area, the schools, I mean, everyone wanted their kids at the Bailey and Daley that lived near there. There were a lot of walkers through the years. Right now, as Counsel Dakota mentioned, the bus driver shortage is definitely exasperating the problem. I'm hearing it from parents at the Butler School as well about the parking along the sidewalk is a huge issue right now, just how many people are driving their kids because they said they're worried about the buses showing up on time. They can't get to work. So that's a larger issue. I really hope that the school department does go back and look at the neighborhood school model, even if it's just reducing the zone size, just so that we can get away from this large congestion. So that's all that I would add, but obviously, looking at the sidewalks is very fair for this area. So, thank you.
If I could, just before I go back to Counsel Gitcher. 20 years ago, maybe a little longer, 21 years ago, I lived at 181 Campbell Drive, my first home, and there was a motion that was filed to this exact thing that Mrs. Dillon said about sidewalks up and down Campbell Drive. We had a quasi-neighborhood meeting with DPW and Counsel Mercy was also there in attendance. And the only drawback at the time was eminent domain taking of properties with sidewalks. I know Campbell Drive is a large, beautiful road. People were concerned sidewalks were there, cause of parking aside, they would lose some of the streetage and also people losing some of their land. So I just, I think it's a good motion. It's a good idea. Mr. Manager, I would hope that we reach out to every resident on Campbell Drive to explain to them the positives and maybe a couple of the negatives that could happen. Only because I remember being there with about 15 or 20 of my neighbors, and I'm sure Counsel Mercy remembers, and just talking back and forth. I believe at the time it was Mr. Walsh that came out and explained to us what the situation would be. Looking back on it, I wish they did it, but I think it was the majority of the neighbors that was against it. Counsel Gitcher, you may remember this, there was also a water flow issue that one side of Campbell Drive, the odd side, actually, we were susceptible to water coming in, rain water, because it is a slight tilt to the Bailey School side. So with that being said, Counsel Gitcher.
Mayor Ruck, I just want to clarify a couple things. Mrs. Dillon had said about the sidewalk condition study, that was a starting point for this council and this government body. We really didn't have anything on the sidewalks. So when we made that motion, we were looking at trying to get a better handle on what are our sidewalk conditions and stuff like that. And additions really weren't much of a thought at that point. It was more or less, we were going to take baby steps to get to the capital planning stage. The last thing that I want to see with this motion happen is it just get buried in like traffic studies. We all know what the traffic study is. So I'm not sure that that would be the, I would go to the engineer and say, okay, what is the design? What is the capabilities, as the mayor has outlined? I think that's more important than the traffic study, because we all know the traffic down there. And I think she obviously knows it. So I would get to the point where what is the construction cost? What would we be doing down here and how can we make it enforceable, as the mayor outlined? You know, if the water's running one way, sidewalks would probably help it because the catch basins are probably on that side and it's eroding the property anyway. So if you built a sidewalk over there, you could use the curbing as a set point to keep someone's property from eroding from large storms, as you said, and, you know, some of those drivers.
What, they put berms in, Counsel, on that side?
Yeah.
And people lost their minds.
And berms are the worst thing to do because berms have to be put in when the road is actually built. You build berms into roads, you don't put them on top of roads. So what happens is it, it doesn't really aesthetically look good either. But if you kept a real curb up there with a good reveal on it, people won't park on sidewalks and you'll actually do justice to the neighborhood. So I do think it's more of a talking point, as you said, and try to get to what is the cost. And while we're looking at doing some of the areas over currently, why not look at sidewalks at the same time as we're going to put in the road? Because we're going to have to rip up our new road to actually place the curbing in the sidewalks. So it's a good time to look at that because of the investment that this council is making into roads and sidewalks. And I, you know, we went through the council right here. It seems like it has a lot of support. I think there's other areas that we have to look at, as Counsel Scott said, and try to repair those. So I thank everybody for their support and I thank all the speakers for coming out.
Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Just quickly, I'd like to thank all the speakers for coming out tonight. And I guess the timing is probably good on this because we're putting together a budget. Obviously, we have the full support of the council on this, so let's run some numbers, see what we can do, talk to the neighborhood, and let's see if we can make this happen sooner than later. Thank you.
All the favor, Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Thank you very much to Mrs. Dillon and Mr. Hunt and the school committee and Bahu for taking time to come down here. This is something we have been looking at. I was talking with a couple of the councils about this. But in regards to the sidewalk condition assessment, Counsel brought that up earlier. This is something that is extremely important to us. So just for a point of clarification, the Tier A schools quarter-mile, Counsel, you're correct, and Mrs. Dillon, you're correct as well. When you were talking about the fact that there is no pink shade around there is because we don't have any. But we looked at it from the engineering, engineer's office to prioritize in and around the schools. And I was talking to Counsel Dakota, actually, earlier today, and he's saying not just around this school, but we're going to be looking at all the schools. So currently, right now, we have a contract out for $4.8 million under the, sorry. It's with Allied Paving, under the full construction piece. That's something we're trying to increase, which we can increase to about 25%, which unfortunately, in this situation, it's a million dollars. Sounds like a lot of money. But if we can indeed do that, that's an opportunity for us to dial into that particular area. So Counsel, to your point, sorry, Counsel Leahy, and Counsel Gitcher and Counsel Dakota, who have talked about this, to that point, we'll see if we can actually make this happen sooner rather than later. This is, but once again, that Tier A that you're looking at, the schools within that quarter-mile, our engineer's office, our DPW office has been looking at specifically that on top of trying to attack some of the other areas that you see in pink, the pink area where we're seeing. There are a lot of sidewalks and some of these sidewalks are in need of serious repair. So we hear you loud and clear, hopefully before the start of this new budget cycle, as Counsel alluding to what Counsel Leahy talked about. We're looking at increasing capital planning for that over the next probably five years to see if we can indeed do that. So your points were well taken and thank you very much. But the council has been on top of this and this is one of the things that we're going to continue to move forward on, walkability in our city. So thank you for your time.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank all the speaker who came out to talk about this during the campaign when I ran at large. I understand there's no sidewalk in both schools and it's kind of very difficult to maneuver crossing the street while the car's coming with a lot of students. One comment I'd like to make to Mr. Manager, if it's okay, because I have a resident who lived in the inland street. The street has sidewalk except in front of his home. And he had the driveway done, and then he would like to pave the sidewalk. So he reached out to the city and the city told him, no, he cannot do that because the sidewalk belonged to the city. And since then, 10 years later, the sidewalk is still not paved.
Just on Campbell Drive or one of those streets that's in motion?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the point is that if someone were willing to do something with the sidewalk and the city would work with the homeowner to allow them to do that. Yes, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, well, under suspension of the rules, can I please make a motion to take 4.6 out of order, please?
motion by Counsel Robinson, take 4.6 out of order. Seconded by Counsel Mercy. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes, 4.6. Counsel Robinson requests the administration work with community members to identify a location to reestablish a city of Lowell-based boxing gym. Seconded by Counsel Mercy. Mr. Clerk.
Keith Rudy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager. I was, I get a call from...
Don't make me throw you out of here.
Excuse me?
Don't make me throw you out of here.
Oh, I'm sorry, 28 Hallie Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rudy. That's right, yeah, all right.
My gosh, I'm telling you. I took too many punches, too many punches, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. When I talked with Counsel Robinson, he had called me up and I told him that I had attended several Golden Gloves shows this year, which was a great show this year attendance-wise. And I think the number-one discussion was, why doesn't Lowell have a gym? So I know that there was a several discussion between different trainers from different areas that wanted to come in and help out. And when I seen this motion, when Counsel Robinson called me, I was a little taken back, because I didn't think it was going to happen this quick. Brief history, I'm not going to go down as much as Mrs. Dillon did, but I'm going to tell you a little bit of a history. When people think of boxing gyms in the city of Lowell, the first thing that comes to your mind is the Golden Gloves or Silver Mittens. And I want to tell you that the Golden Gloves have been going on about 75, over 75 years. Well, our history with boxing gyms in the city go way further than that. Two names that I looked up real quick was Francis Finney Boyle, who was one bout away from a world championship. His son was a local police officer in Lowell, Artyboyle. And Alphonse Mello Taveras, who went by the name of El Mello. El Mello, in 1924, represented the United States in Lowell, Mass. in the Olympics. And just by coincidence, he happened to fight in Paris, France. He won his first two bouts and lost his third bout. And this year, the Olympics are in Paris, France, the 100th anniversary of Mr. Mello. So boxing gyms have been, and them guys fought back in the, Mr. Boyle, I believe, started in 1913, his career ended in 1927. I think Mr. Mello started somewhere in the 20s and then in the early 30s. So boxing gyms have been part of the fabrics for the city of Lowell. And I think that we need some space. I think the people are out there. The interest is there. And I think that the Golden Gloves, as you know, the Golden Glove history, we held the Nationals here in 1973. We held them here in 1995. I think with the attendance of the Lowell Golden Gloves this year and also having the national Golden Glove president running our organization, Barb Russo, and Kevin Coffin from the Lowell Sun, so there might be some interest about getting the, maybe hopefully betting on the national Golden Gloves that come back to Lowell. It would be a shame not to have Lowell represented. Lowell has such a rich history. And today's boxing gyms, when I consulted with these other farmer fighters, boxers in my area, who now own gyms, one owns them in Boston, one owns one in Redding, and as you know, Mickey Ward and his nephew owns one in Westford. It's no more just a boxing gym. It's a fitness center. Because they tell me a lot of the women are in there using the gyms and learning how to defend themselves. So I think it's a worthwhile thing that we need to look into if we can somehow get it coordinated and maybe get some type of advice of looking at grants. And I'm going to use the famous words of the city manager of Lowell, Mr. Golden, it isn't about starting a program, it's being able to sustain a program over a long period of time. So any assistance I think we can get from the city and just putting people together, setting me in a room, having a discussion, I think this can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Clerk.
And I was, arts.
Thank you guys for having me. Well, it's an honor to be here. For me, it's been a really long road. I'm three years sober now, and I can attribute a lot of that to boxing. Mr. Lucas, who's here today, Perry Lucas, he took me out of the YMCA, brought me to the West End Gym. I fought in the Golden Gloves last year. I wasn't able to this year. Kind of life got in the way, but in large part, it saved my life. Mr. Rudy can talk to the history of the sport in Lowell. I can talk to the present. There are... There are people who are homeless, sparring in the alleyways, there are kids sparring in the backyards, in parking lots. There's a ground swelling of support down at the YMCA. I'm blessed enough to be part of getting a program started down there. So there's a ground swelling of support. The way I like to put it, the pipeline's already there, we just need to tap into it. Like, it's already built, it's, it's flowing. Like, these people are there, these people are interested. I honestly don't feel like I should have to get a petition. Like, just talk to people, that's all you need to do. There's so many people out there who are impacted positively by it and, and would be even further if there was a large facility. And like Mr. Rudy said, something that's sustainable, not a fly-by-night operation. And I know the city's limited as far as funds go, but if you can reach out to your contacts in private industry or, you know, grants or whatever it is, I would love to be a part of this. You know, several months back, I kind of took the approach like I wanted to spearhead this thing myself. You know, I don't know really what that was, but I just want to be a part of this. And I know it's of great benefit, it helped save my life, so I can really only speak to that. There's so much more to be said, but thank you all for your time, and thank you, Counselor Robinson, for bringing this to the table. Thank you.
James Lucas?
How you doing? How you doing? My name is James Lucas, I live in 9th and Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. And talking about boxing, I was born and raised in Lowell. I fought in the Silver Mittens, I fought in the Golden Gloves. I've been fighting, I fought professional. And it's sad, sad, sad to see when you go to the Lowell Golden Gloves, nobody from Lowell representing us. So my thing today is to find out how can we get representation for Lowell. You know, because like I say, it's very, very sad. You know, like I say, I fought for a long time, you know. I was ranked number four in the country as an amateur, you know. I fought professional. I was Marvin Marvin Hayek's sparring partner when he fought Sugar Ray Leonard. And it all comes because I came from Lowell, I grew up in Lowell, I boxed out of Lowell. And to see how it is now where you don't have no representation is very, very sad. So hopefully, through this meeting, we can get some representation for Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas, thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Counselor Robinson? Go ahead, yes.
Just, just one more thing. We do have representation from Lowell in the gloves in particular, they're just going to other gyms to train. They're all here, we're here, me too, me included. I've received offers from professionals in Lawrence to go up there and train full-time. Said no, like, I want to stay here, I want to be a part of Lowell, you know. But again, you know, just to kind of piggyback off of what they were saying, the representation is there, it's just the gym isn't here. That's the only difference, but thanks, thanks again.
Yeah. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, thank you to the speakers that came out to speak tonight. I think we're all well aware, Golden Gloves alone is a huge draw to the city, and it's so much deeper than that. We take pride in everything we do, from our educational institutions to you name it. I mean, people love to say, you know, I'm from Lowell, and this is part of the fabric of our city, is boxing. One of the things we hear, I think it's, we hear about it more so now because everyone has a cellphone, is sometimes there's fights in schools, in the high schools, and no more nor less than there's ever been. It's just, I think we hear more about it now. But again, growing up, this sport, if nothing else, teaches discipline, it teaches self-control, it teaches confidence, and, and that's for everything, men, women, regardless. It's, it's, it's a great exercise, and I mean, those that choose to embark on a career in it, that's always an option as well. So I think, once we lost Romalos, that was a sad day for the city, and I think anything that we can do from our standpoint, I mean, if there's any ARPA or anything else to help work with the community, I think it's a no-brainer. I would like to ask or put the motion forward to the mayor. I'd like to make a motion maybe to create an ad-hoc committee comprised of mainly members of the community, like Mr. Rudy and the other two speaker that came out tonight, Mr. Lucas, and, and then let's see, can we bring in some private public partnerships at the table to identify a location and really put some, some wind behind the sails on, on looking at bringing back a boxing program in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Dakota, Counselor Getche, Counselor...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, the motion was to create an ad-hoc subcommittee in regards, looking at creating this program.
Do, you want to get to this motion first, or how you want to do it?
Can I speak, or do we have to vote on his motion? A second, does that have to be seconded?
We'll get, we'll get to it, I promise you. Counselor Dakota?
I guess what I'm, is all due respect to Counselor Robinson, I'm not sure if it needs an ad-hoc at this point. I think I'd like to put this on the city manager's back and have him look at, you know, private and public companies that may want to get into this. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that something that your administration could do, and if, and then report out, report out to us.
Sure, the manager and Mr. Rudy, get something hashed out.
Well, let's, let's keep Mr. Rudy out of it. Anything bad comes out of that, I'll tell you that. I'm just kidding. You know, I, I know Mr. Rudy will, will agree with me. You know, back in the 70s and 80s when we were growing up, there would have been a lot of kids in Barica House of Correction if they didn't have the West End Gym. You know, kept them out of trouble. And, you know, we don't have, we don't have anything like that anymore. And with the pride, with the pride that we have, and, you know, I know for one person I would help out, and that'd be Mickey Ward, be more than happy to help out. So there's Mr. Rudy, there's Mr. Lucas, there's a lot of people that are going to help out. And obviously, Mr. Romalo did a fantastic job here, but we need to keep the legacy going on, going on here. And Mr. Manager, if you think that's something that your office can handle, and Counselor Robinson, if you don't mind.
I'm perfectly fine if, if Mr. Manager wants to take this on and work on this, but greatly appreciated, thank you.
Counselor Getche is all set.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. And I would just add to what the other councils have mentioned and asked the manager also to pursue hosting the 2026 National Golden Gloves Tournament that was mentioned by Mr. Rudy. So, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Dakota, please. All the, Counselor Young, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, all the speakers. This is a good motion. I feel that strongly feel in support of this. It's just one of many ways to get kid off the street, as Counselor Dakota has mentioned. You know, train them, have them placed to go, have purpose. I too agree that there are certainly resources out there, either private and for-profit organization that will be a part of this in terms of grant or, you know, donation. So having Mr. Rooney heading that team, as you said, Mr. Manager, is the right, you know, things to do. So I'm in full support of this, thank you.
Great. So the motion by Counselor Robinson has a second already, all the favors say aye. Motion passes. The motion by Counselor Scott, secured by Counselor Dakota, to pursue the 2026 National Golden Gloves Tournament. Quickly, I know, speaking to Mr. Russo at the last night of, of the event, Mr. Rudy was, was there as well, he did make a plea that we should actually apply for it, the 2026, I think it's a two-week event, Mr. Rudy, that brings thousands of people to, to the idea. So it's a great motion by Counselor Scott. Mr. Manager, have a comment on that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilors, we have been having this discussion regards to 2026, and right now it's being held, I believe, in Michigan, it's coming up.
Detroit this year.
Detroit, Michigan, this year. So there's a desire to go look to see if it's something that we could possibly bring back here to the city of Lowell, the three rings. We've had some of this discussion, and Mr. Russo, it's been a pretty exciting time. So we'll continue down that road, but I'm confident that this could be something, this could be the start of something great, especially for this particular motion, as well as maybe bringing the Golden Gloves back to where it belongs, right here in the city of Lowell. So that's been in the works, and we'll continue to see if financially we can make that happen.
Great. All the favors say aye. Oppose motion passes. Any more suspension of the rules? We're good to go. 4.1, Counselor...
Do we have any other registered speakers tonight? I believe there might have been one on our 4.5.
4.5? Still the suspension, 4.5. Counselor Robinson requests the city manager to have the public department provide a detailed update on what is the city's policy on construction vehicles parked on public streets, what are the recommended adjustments needed, and what is being done to enforce any and all current policies regarding this. Secured by Counselor Yem, Counselor Robinson.
Who's the registered speaker, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk?
Bob Hunt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Manager, again, my name is Robert Hunt, I live at 48 Florence Avenue in Lowell. And I, I am here to speak in favor of this motion tonight, and I believe the definition of a construction vehicle, as it's written, needs to be looked at again. The giant vans that we see now with every tool that they own on top, parked in a residential neighborhood is not really a good idea. And we all see this, we wonder when they go around corners where they're going to tip over. The typical Ram Promaster van is over 12,000 pounds, 18 feet long, and nine feet high. When it's outfitted with six to eight ladders, two wheelbarrows, and maybe a lumo pole systems, can be up to 24 feet long. I know this specifically because I came out of my house the other morning, and this was parked in front of my house, and it basically blocked the sun out coming into the, the front yard. And you see this all over, all over the city, not really just in the Highlands in my neighborhood, but I really see it in the Centerville neighborhood with all the contractors down there. So I just want you to take a look at it and basically come up with a definition, because I don't believe there is a definition for a construction vehicle right now. It's just labeled, from what I could find in the ordinances, it's just called a construction vehicle with nothing behind it. So basically, if we could take a look at that and maybe scale down the, the physical size or the height or the weight or whatever, just take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I know this is something that's been discussed on the floor in the past. I want to first say, we all realize people have to work, and, and we're not trying to hurt anybody or stop anybody from putting food on the table. That's not what this is about. I just think it's, it's becoming a real challenge, especially, I mean, in Centerville, I have to say, some of our very, very, very tight streets, to the point where a fire truck was trying to respond to someone going into shock. And, and the firefighter had to get out of the vehicle and start knocking on doors to make the turn down the street in the middle of an emergency, medical emergency. There was vans with the ladders parked on both sides of the street. I don't know if it's something we need to look at, what is our current ordinance and where do we need to go? I've, I've had discussions with plenty of people. If you have a vehicle, so if I work for a company and I take a company vehicle home, that's one company vehicle parked in my home. Now, if it's checked, it's going to come back registered to the business address, no, no problem. But I, in some instances, you're seeing four, three and four of these company vehicles registered to the residential address. And, and I think that might be one of the issues that we're facing, that there's not really enforcement of that. If, you cannot have commercial vehicles registered to a residential address and operating a construction or, or something business out of a residential home. In addition to, it's, with the weights, could that be leading to some of the challenges that we're dealing with, with the rapid deterioration of our roadways and even our sidewalks in some areas, because they are parking on the sidewalks, because the roads are too narrow to even fit completely on the roadway? So I think this is something that's long overdue, and I think it's going to take some, some thought and thinking outside the box to try to address this, and, and also work with the community to explain that we're not trying to harm anybody from, from earning a dollar and going to work. But we all have to find that compromise in order for everybody to be able to get by. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is a subject that is very frustrating and very dangerous and scary, especially when these vehicles pack on a corner and you're trying to get out into a main road. So that in itself is, and to pack them on residential streets, they're so big that they hinder your view. But I thought the ordinance specifically stressed the weight and the amount of axles. I think that's what the ordinance went by. It banned certain number of axles on the vehicle. That's what determined them not being able to be on the street. That's what I thought. Maybe it should be looked at further and be brought other means by maybe size or weight. I think there is a weight restriction as well, but there's got to be a little bit more to it than just axles and weight. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
All the favors say aye.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, do you, do you think something like this would be better served to be referred to like a rules subcommittee to discuss with solicitor and, and look at the ordinance, what we currently have, and try to work on in ordinance? I mean, because it seems like this is going to require some discussion.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, I would think Transportation Subcommittee and maybe Rules, I don't know.
Yeah, Rules goes to the council stuff, you know, so Transportation Subcommittee by Counselor Robinson.
Sure.
Seconded by Counselor Scott, all the favors say aye.
That's a good thing.
Oppose motion passes.
Thank you.
Any other suspension of the rules? Great. 4.1, Counselor Getche, requests the city manager to give the city council an update on the installation of water bottle fill stations in the schools, secured by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. I know about three months ago, I had spoken to Assistant City Manager Machado on this very issue, because some of the school is going to put in these water fill bubbler stations at the Riley School, but I was told that the contract was executed, and now I'm just wondering, you know, what is the status? Have any of those things been put in place or not? Maybe we don't even need a report if we can answer that tonight. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager.
You want to enter now, you want to put in a report?
Have any of them been put in yet from that contract? Because I was told three months ago from Assistant City Manager Machado that the contract was executed, it was ready to go. I mean, we had a whole department that was going to put some in at the Riley School for free, but we were told no.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. CFO?
Mr. Mayor, there was an issue with the contract as it related to the funding from ESER. So the auditor had to wait for affirmative approval from DESI. There's a series of approvals that have to happen, and I think recently the auditor did execute the contract, but there was a significant delay in the approval process, seeking approval from DESI for this project.
So I guess my question's this, whenever we go out to bid for something, we're supposed to have secure funding for whatever we're going out to bid for, right? So how did we go out to bid if we didn't have the funding approval to, if that was the case? Because when I spoke to the Assistant City Manager, he assured me the contract was in place, it was signed, it was going, and I'm only saying this because family members are still calling, and, and they feel as though these things, you know, they, they go to a bubbler, they feel as though it's not, and I'm not going to get into the quality, but, you know, it just seems like we take so long to get to the point of installation when the school was going to do the Riley School for free. So Greater Lowell Tech was going to do that for nothing, but we said the contract was signed, sealed, delivered, everything was in place, and it was bid out and you couldn't separate it out. And today, here we are, three, almost four months later, and not one has been installed. So do we have a confirmed date when they're going to start this work?
Mr. CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to be clear, this is a school department contract, and the issue with the funding was not that there wasn't an appropriation, there was, there's the ESER funding, which there is an appropriation for. However, it's a specific approval process with the DESI funding for anything that's not funding for salaries, you have to submit capex forms to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And then they have to approve it, but they won't approve it until you have a scope of work defined in a contract. So it puts this, I can understand, you know, DESI's point of view in this, because they need a defined scope of work and amount of money before they can offer a district approval. But we've had a number of these challenges on the school department side with projects for capital improvements because of this approval process that has been inherent in the ESER funding. So it's, it's unfortunate... So it's unfortunate. You know, we've been trying to push this along by aiding in the school department's business office communication with DESI, and we did get there. So that's sort of the good news of it, but unfortunately, there's somewhat of a bureaucratic delay with seeking approval from the state on these projects.
I know, Council, we approved 847,000 on the school committee side just a little while ago, and hopefully that...
I don't disagree with what's being said. What I'm saying is that the scope of work should have been already in a contract before it even goes out to bid, should have been sent out to say, okay, the funding can be put this way, and then you go out to bid once the approval's there. You don't go out to bid with a scope of work and do, try to serve two masters at the same time, because if one says no, then you wasted your time going out to bid, and everybody's handcuffed here. And when I spoke to the Assistant City Manager, he assured me the contract was in place, it was ready to go, and that was almost four months ago, and it's probably from someone, I'm not pointing fingers here, but if we're going to go out to bid for something, the funding should be already included. So if there's a scope of work, that should have been already sent off, it's okay, and then you go out to bid. I guess I'm just confused on why we're going out sending the scope of bid to one and not the other, unless that's the school department who does that. I don't know that answer.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I want to be very clear that there is a scope of work.
Yeah.
And it was bid with the scope, the bidder submitted their price proposal, but it is not until the auditor goes to put her name on the contract that she needs an account number from the schools. And that's sort of the, that's the checkpoint where we need affirmative approval from DESI. So this is a, it's entirely within the hands of the funder, which is DESI in this case. We approach all contracts with the same process, and it's really this specific funding source, the ESER funding, that has caused some challenges in trying to move forward on some of these school improvement projects.
I wish four months ago we knew this, because the Riley School had already been done. You know, we had somebody lined up to do the work, and I just wish we would have known that, but I was told you can't separate out.
It's entirely within the hands of DESI, the approval process, so...
I understand what you're saying to me. I understand what you're saying about the payment process, but we should have another source and pay it, and then we backfill the funding if that's the case. Because this is a quality of life issue. It's a health issue for students, and that's why we're trying to rush it through. I understand the point of DESI and money and ESER funds and everything else. Thank you.
In the comments? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.2, Council Gitchia, Council Mercier, request City Council Senior Citizens Subcommittee meet once a month on a Thursday at the Senior Center on Broadway Street to discuss any issues or concerns pertaining to the Senior Center. No second needed.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just as the neighborhood Subcommittee met in different neighborhoods when I was the chair, Councilor Gitchia suggested that we could do the same thing here, but only meet with the seniors. Instead of them coming to us and having an issue, maybe we could nip it in the bud, and maybe once a month, we could take our Subcommittee on the road for the seniors and go to the Senior Center. Councilor Dakota, Councilor Gitchia, and myself. That would be something if there's an issue, or if there isn't and everything's fine, that's a good thing, too. If the city clerk doesn't mind coming out of City Hall and traveling with us on a journey to the Senior Center, that'd be cool. And the reason I suggested to Councilor Gitchia that we make this motion is because this is the proper procedure, and I learned it the very difficult way when there was a similar situation many, many years ago, and there was a problem in one of the parks, and I made, I just made an appointment with the city clerk to go and have a Subcommittee on Parks without coming to the council first and referring it to the Park Subcommittee. One of my colleagues chewed me out on it, so I never made that mistake again. So rather than just go and have this Subcommittee, this is a form of saying if something, can we do this? Can we go on the road with this? So that's why we're making it, to clear all the air that we didn't come to the City Council first. So we're asking permission if we could do that by this motion. Thank you. Motion approves.
Council Scott to Council Robinson.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my only question on it is, so would it be a standing agenda that's posted that says, like, public input? Like, what would the monthly agenda be that would be posted for the meeting?
Well, this motion would ask if we could start out there on the second Tuesday in the after, I mean, second Thursday in the afternoon, about like 1:30, just so we could set it up and see if there's any concerns. If there are, we will make a motion from then on to let people know about it. We would do it the proper way, let the city clerk know about it and post it. Of course, we would do that, sure.
All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.4, Council Robinson, request city manager to work with UMass Lowell, DPD, DPW, and any other relevant entities to make areas of university significance highly visible throughout our city. Seconded by Council Yem, Council Robinson.
Thank you. You know, I think we're always looking at ways to kind of dress up our city, and I'd actually like to amend this motion and also expand it out in the area of Middlesex Community College as well as the high school. And some of the ideas could be, you know, you go into other communities, and maybe we use, if the traffic allowed, paint for crosswalks, school colors, banners, flags, opportunity for, say, some of the students at Lowell High to come up with some kind of like motivational phrases that we could put on banners around the high school on poles, and it's dressing it up. So then, when we bring people into the city, they kind of get an idea that they're near the university, one of the campuses or an identified important area, or you get an idea you're near Middlesex Community College or an important area, just by everything that's around you, without even having to really read the sign. Just visually, you understand, hey, wow, there's something near here, because all of a sudden, I see all this. Same thing with the high school. Songus Arena brings in a lot of people, and I think it's a golden opportunity with that kind of foot traffic to highlight you're within the area of our high school. So I think these are the kind of things, when you enter a community, that you remember, the banners, the signage, the colors on the floor, all these different things, and hopefully our community partners would be interested in working with us and try to get this done. Thank you.
Amendment to the motion include Middlesex Community College and Lowell High School by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Noon. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.7, Council Yem, request city manager to have the appropriate department update the City Council on plan to celebrate 2024 Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Seconded by Council Noon, Council Yem.
The motion speak for itself, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 5, Communications for the City Manager, 5.1, motion responses. A, fields leased and permitted. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers and his team for the report, and I'm happy to see that the applications for permit is online. Everything's online. You can just go check. This is awesome. Thank you.
5.1B, motion response, new overpass maintenance plan. Council Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to the city manager. Thank you for the response. I just don't see the agreement that says that there's a two-year plan on it. Oh, I'm sorry, the field lease. We're on B, right? B. Okay. I just didn't see, I saw the maintenance plan from the contractor, but I didn't see where the agreement says that they have the two-year warranty to it, and where is the piece that actually, where we're going from there? That's really the question. After the warranty's over, I really don't see, I see what their maintenance plan recommendations are. If, through you, Mr. Manager to Assistant City Manager.
The two-year language was included in the original contract that we signed with them that required that they would provide that service for that particular term. At this point, there was a cost savings on the project itself that we've seen, so we have some funds set aside right now that could go towards maintenance of the location at a future time. So we're trying to determine at this point whether or not that's something that we're going to like pay DPW to do, or if that's something that we want to hire out with the cost savings that we've seen at this time. And then over time, the question will be whether or not that's something that we'll be putting into capital requests for ongoing work, or it'll just be absorbed in the department. But right now, we're trying to utilize the term of what they owe us through their contract, and then use the cost savings that we saw in the project to help get us through at least the first couple of years when we want to ensure that, you know, the plants kind of take hold at the location and are doing well.
So what is that two-year maintenance plan that they have right now worth? There has to be a cost factor that I know is included in the contract, but they must have a number on what they think that that piece means to you. So is there a number that we're looking at, you know, going in? And if there is, is that attainable in the future? That's what the question really is on this, because I understand the maintenance plan came out of the contract directly, but it's so vague on the area that, you know, mulching, pruning, it's just kind of a rubber stamp to a contract. So my question is really, are we looking to purchase equipment to do this, or is this something that we have enough people to do? What is the thought process at this point? Or are we just not at that stage yet?
Ms. Rose?
We don't believe that we're going to need to purchase any additional equipment. We try to approach all of our landscaping projects that, with language that includes that it requires minimum maintenance over time. The initial couple of years, when you do a planting project like this of this scale, it's generally making sure that they get sort of situated within the landscaping and that it takes hold. And so I think for the first couple of years, it's probably a little bit heavier of a lift than we hope it will be moving forward. Parks Department has certainly had to focus attention on the cleaning of the islands. That's new work that they hadn't been previously doing, which is not something that falls under the maintenance contract. General cleaning of the area is not the responsibility of the contractor. That is something that DPW's had to already absorb. Off the top of my head, I don't know what the contract had for the annual cost, but it's certainly something that we could, we could talk to the contractors for to just get a better understanding of what they would estimate moving forward.
Are you happy with the way the contract? Because you get a lot of residents who call us on this area, who say that, you know, you're a gateway area coming to the city, and the mulch isn't really up to par, and there are a few things that aren't up to par, because it's not being really outlined and addressed that way. Are you, is the city happy with the way that this has been played forward, or is it something that we don't think it meets what our needs are? Because the reason why this motion came forward is because people were pushing back, saying that this is not being maintained, and there isn't mulch up there, and it doesn't look like a good area. And I don't know, Mayor Rourke is in the area more so than anybody, and I don't know, does it meet your expectations of a clean area? And I got a lot of people who reached out and said that it doesn't, and that's the only reason why I'm questioning where it's going from here, because if we're having a challenge in the first two years, how do we meet the expectations in the future years? And I don't know, Mayor...
You know, springtime, I imagine, give it a few weeks to get, you know, new mulch and stuff in there. I mean, some of the property owners could do a bad job cleaning up their areas, but...
That's what I mean. They're not out there right away doing the stuff, and property owners are...
I mean, I think your overpass looks pretty good to me, but I would give it a couple of weeks, maybe, for the new mulch to get out there.
If you can just call the contractor and see if they can step up their game a little bit. Thank you.
Motion to accept, placed on file by Council Gitchia, seconded by Council Mercier. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Yes, Council Noon.
Can we bundle 5.2?
We gotta do a roll call on one of them, and just one just passes.
You can do that, sure.
Plenty of time to bundle later on, Council. 5.2, Communication Registration from Veterans Commission. Motion to accept, placed on file by Council Noon, seconded by Council Mercier. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.3, Reappointments to the Veterans Commission. We have three reappointments. First is James Gaffey, the third. Second is Richard Cody, and the third is Walter O'Neil. The motion to accept, by, motion to adopt by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Anyas?
Six, vote to the city manager, 6.1, vote to accept, expend $15,000 cultural district grant for case. We have the full reading, seconded by Tyler, the motion, oops, authorized the city manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expend a cultural district grant in a total amount of $15,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts via Massachusetts Cultural Council. Motion to adopt by Council Noon, seconded by Council Scott. Roll call.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Anyas?
Eight, report Subcommittee, if any, 8.1, Technology Utility Subcommittee, April 10, 2024. Chairman Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on the 10th at 6:00 PM in this room. President, roll call, were myself, Council Chow, and Council Scott, as well as the City of Lowell's Chief Information Officer, Maran Fernandez, the City of Lowell's Chief Financial Officer, Connor Baldwin, and the City of Lowell's Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Austin Ball. We had two items on the agenda. Item one was a discussion around a comprehensive MIS update around their current and future plans, and then item two was an ordinance to create a new position of Deputy Chief Information Officer. Mr. Fernandez gave us a wonderful presentation that started with the history of MIS, which was founded in 1998, and their mission was to manage and maintain the existing computer architecture and to address present and future needs. Obviously, since that time, the department has grown, and their bailiwick has increased. Over time, the Police Department, the Fire Department have created their own MIS establishments, their own MIS departments, rather, to support the 24/7 nature of public safety. The School Department has created their own information systems architecture as well, as well as the Career Center and a couple other organizations here and there. This has led to fragmentation of the technical organization, creating silos of data, of operations, of policies, and the wish of the administration at this point is to really kind of try to bring all that together under one roof, tie everyone together, to make it much easier to have consistent policies across the entire enterprise, and really to treat the entire City of Lowell as an enterprise. This initial step will not include the School Department, but will take all the city side stuff and tie it all together. To do that, the city wants, the city administration wants to focus on three verticals within the MIS organization, a city operations vertical, a public safety operations vertical, and an application operations vertical, so that each of these areas can be fleshed out and built out into a resilient organization that can support all the needs across the city, from everything that happens here at City Hall, DPW, Career Center, et cetera, et cetera, to the public safety folks. This, this initial step will not include the school department, but will take all the city-side stuff and tie it all together. To do that, the city wants, the city administration wants to focus on three verticals within the MIS organization, a city operations vertical, a public safety operations vertical, and an application operations vertical, so that each of these areas can be fleshed out and built out into a resilient organization that can support all the needs across the city, from everything that happens here at City Hall, DPW, Career Center, et cetera, et cetera, to the public safety folks, to, you know, the applications that, that the city uses across the organization, whether that's something like 311, or which we're looking to bring in, and they're working to, to get up and running, or existing things that already exist within the city, be it, I'm sorry, the, the city, the municipal thing that everyone uses. Munis, thank you. Sorry about that, just a little brain situation. But, so that was a really good presentation, just to kind of understand where they're going, how they've recovered from the cyber event that we're now a year on. There was a lot of work that was done by the team across the organization to bring back operations, to bring back systems, to get everything up and running, to implement a lot of cloud-based services, things like Office 365 that were in the roadmap for a five-year implementation. It had to be done really in a matter of months, thanks to the cyber situation last year. So there's been a lot of change, and now the need is to modernize the organization to represent, or to reflect that change and to be more nimble and provide better support going forward. We then talked about the deputy CIO position. Maran has been the CIO for the past 22 years, and the deputy CIO role is a cornerstone of this proposed reorg to help with succession planning within the department as well as delivery of all these services. Right now, it's, it's something that the administration has been looking at across the board, trying to create those succession plans and, you know, to kind of keep things moving forward as we go along here. We didn't quite have enough time to finish all the discussion because there was a meeting in this room afterwards. We've continued the meeting, and we'll be meeting on April 24th at 6:00 PM to finish up this discussion. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report as a port of progress by Council Gitchia, seconded by Council Dakota. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. 8.2, Council Noon, there are motion to bundle the four reports.
Yes.
By Council Noon, seconded by Council Gitchia. 8.2, wire inspector reports, the motion to adopt all accompanying orders, do them all at once. One, National Grid request installation of upgraded gas mains Campbell Drive, Wedge Street, Lower Street, Rador Street, Atlantic Street, and Ruth Street. National Grid request installation of upgraded gas mains in Harvard, Stevens, Troy, and Nicolet